Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for May 2, 2023. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Next item is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes this evening? Okay, not seeing any. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
Sumo.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Brings us down to public communications. This evening, we've got a few items under public recognition, and the first one we're going to start with is our Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month is chosen by their coworkers in the city. Each month, employees have the opportunity to nominate one of their coworkers for really exemplifying the mission, vision, values, and goals of the city of Kent. It can be in a special project or in the way they conduct themselves on a daily basis. And I'll tell you, most times that it's the latter. It's the, this is just how they carry themselves in the organization and how they show up for their coworkers and show up for the residents of Kent. I am pleased to announce that our May 2023 Employee of the Month is Melissa Edlin Oakley, sitting there in the front row. She is hired by the city on June 10, 2008, as Legal Secretary One in the Legal Department. On April 16, 2015, she was promoted into her current position as a paralegal. Melissa performs the duties of a paralegal for the Criminal Division of the City Attorney's Office as authorized by state law and court rules and delegated by an attorney. Melissa was nominated because she is a quintessential team player. She goes above and beyond to make her coworkers feel seen and appreciated for all they bring to the table. It's impossible to come to work with a less-than mood and have a conversation with Melissa and not feel better by the end of it. So that's that, just how you show up every single day, Melissa, and we're super grateful for that. She's consistently generating new ideas and brainstorming ways to help things run more smoothly and efficiently. In addition to trying to improve operations division-wide, Melissa is always looking for ways to make herself a better employee. She volunteers for every training opportunity and is eager to take on new tasks. One of Melissa's greatest attributes is her sheer kindness and selflessness, and that helps make her an asset to the department and the city as a whole. Melissa continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as May's Employee of the Month. Let me say thank you, Melissa. I think that Tammy would like to say a few words, and then we'll have you come up and we'll do a quick picture, okay?
Of course, I have to. So I've had the pleasure of working with Melissa for just about 15 years, and she truly is such a huge asset to our department. And the support that she has can be seen from all of the folks from our office who have appeared here today just to support her and her recognition tonight. Melissa does bring so much joy to our office. So some of you know of AJ, the supported employee. He now has transitioned into delivering mail to our office. Well, Melissa wanted to make sure that he felt welcome on his first day, so she made him a custom sign about his, his special mailbox, about where his mail could be dropped off and received from. And then she also was communicating with his assistant to find out what she could do to make him feel more welcomed when he came into our office each week. So that is just a snippet into the kind of person that Melissa is. She truly does bring so much joy to all of us, and I could not imagine the office without her. It is such a fun place to work because she is there with us. So I'm truly honored and so incredibly proud that she is the city's Employee of the Month. First time in her 15 years, too.
Melissa, the mail, that mailbox is legendary. I just keep hearing, yeah, nothing like the one upstairs. So I think it is. It's a perfect example of that kindness and, and commitment to, to making others around you feel important and valued. So thank you very, very much. I'm going to ask if you want to say anything. You do not have to.
Well, I just want to say, as you mentioned, I mean, it will be 15 years next month that I go to the city, and I cannot imagine. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
You got to get your own TV so we can have proof.
No, so I was just going to say that I can't imagine working anywhere else. It's like, our department is like a big family. Pat has mentioned it several times, and even though we fight and yell and scream at each other sometimes in our office, we, we still love each other. So it's a great place to work. So I'm very proud to, you know, I'm very honored for this and appreciative, so thank you.
All right. Let's do a really quick picture. You want, Tammy, you want to come down and join us?
Thank you. I warned you about the photo, so.
I think she wants to stay on her. Okay. We are going to transition into the proclamation portion of our meeting this, this, this evening. I have four proclamations, so I'm going to go ahead and read each one. Invite the recipient up to come and say a few words. We'll do a quick photo, and then that'll be, then we'll be on to the next one. The first proclamation we have this evening is a proclamation for Provider Appreciation Day. Whereas childcare provides a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide, prepares them for a lifetime of learning and growth, and is a vital force in our economy. And whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of Washington's young children, families, and communities. And whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staff predominantly by women, are still recovering from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic while they have continued to meet the needs of families. And whereas Kent recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for those families, communities, and the economy. And whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim May 12, 2023, to be Provider Appreciation Day in the city of Kent, and call upon our residents to recognize childcare providers for their important work. I think it's something that any one of us parents say we would not have made it through that phase of our lives and our child's lives without the help of our childcare providers. Joining us this evening is Amarin Ibrahim to accept this proclamation. Thank you, Sam. Go ahead and present that. I'm going to do a picture quick before we do, do comments. Is that?
Should I call?
If you have other folks that you'd like to have come up to the picture, that would be great.
I would like to call Valerie.
Good evening. I just had to call one of the providers in earlier. Miana is our leader. As well as, Mr. Hudson, did you please do us? Miana is a provider.
Squeezing everything. Sorry, otherwise.
And bright spark.
Yes.
You want me to stand?
Yeah. Camera. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say, thank you guys so much for recognizing all the hard work that we do as providers. So, thank you.
All right. Our next proclamation is for Bike Everywhere Month. So, whereas Kent residents find that bicycling is a popular and viable means of personal transportation, and whereas this Kent City Council desires to promote the use of bicycling as the mode of urban transportation in the city. And whereas the role of the bicycle in Kent is an economical mode of personal transportation that decreases traffic congestion, reduces demands for parking facilities, and will continue to increase in importance in coming years. And whereas bike facilities like the Inurban Trail, the Green River Trail, and the Seuss Creek Trail are intensively used for commuting, recreation, and other bicycle trips. And whereas concerns of personal health, having clean air to breathe, and preserving the planet make the bicycle an increasingly attractive alternative to unrestricted use of the, to unrestricted use of the automobile. And whereas the city desires to have an active role in promoting the safety and well-being of those who bicycle, who use bicycles for all transportation purposes. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor for the city of Kent, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Bike Everywhere Month in Kent, Washington, and call upon the people of the city to support this observance by riding their bicycles everywhere while educating and encouraging others to utilize this mode of travel. Joining us is our Kent Bicycle Advisory Board Chair, Wendy Graves.
We'll do the photo. And then I'll let you give some comments. How about that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ralph, and thank you, council members. The Kent Bicycle Advisory Board thanks your, thanks you for all of your support and all things biking around the city of Kent. With your support, we're super excited that we will be able to have the Bicycle Rodeo, the Second Annual Bicycle Rodeo, on May 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. up at the Kent YMCA. So we definitely encourage anyone and everyone to come out and support this, this activity. It is for kids, to support children in improving upon their biking skills, and we want to continue working with the kids of Kent and getting them out on bikes, and we've got a lot of exciting things planned this year, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Wendy. And I will say, I am so proud of our Bicycle Advisory Board. For, for years, they did the great service of weighing in on bicycle plans and where we needed trails and those kinds of things. And then last year, they came and said, you know, we want to do a bike rodeo. Let's figure it out. And we figured it out, and it was a fabulous event watching the kids up there getting bicycle helmets, going through the obstacle course. Really excited that it's turned into an annual event and can't wait to be out there with everybody in a couple of weeks. So thank you. All right. Our next proclamation is National Correctional Officers Week. Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring public safety. And whereas correctional facilities across the U.S., both civilian and military, public and private, adult and juvenile, are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession. And whereas correctional officers and employees are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safe and secure facilities. And whereas correctional officers and employees are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice and our nation. And whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors. And whereas correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor, counsel, and treat thousands of offenders. And whereas correctional officers and employees provide offenders with direction, hope, and a new focus while assisting with reentry and life outside. And whereas correctional officers and employees rise to meet any challenges and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. Now there, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, call upon all the residents of Kent and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week, May 7 through 13, 2023, as National Correctional Officers Week, and join me in commemorating correctional officers and employees who deserve recognition for their service and should be commended by leaders in the profession and the public for the tremendous job they do and exceptional performance of duties under the most difficult of circumstances. So joining us to accept the proclamation, we've got Commander Diane, Diane McHusson, and it looks like Chief Padilla as well.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Council, appreciate that. Commander McHusson loves public speaking, so I've got her notes here, and so I'll, I'll speak on her behalf. And she's part of the celebration this week for sure, and I'll touch on that. We're called the Kent Police Department, and we have a corrections wing, division, and it's a hundred-person facility down on Central there, and it really is the unsung group, you know, behind-the-seeds group that gets a lot of work done and is really vital and essential to the overall criminal justice system. Our mission at, at its core is to serve and protect, and that mission can't be accomplished without the hard work of our corrections professionals down at our jail and across the country. They literally live with the inmates, right? They're there day in, day out. And one of the things that's remarkable about our jail, there's several things, but one of the things culturally is our officers really invest in the human beings that are there. We don't, we have a municipal jail, so the stays aren't super long, but every now and then we have people that are incarcerated for up to a year. And our people really invest, invest in them and human beings and try to do what they can while they, they meet out their, their sentence, but also to develop them and treat them like people. There's transformations that occur in the jail from when people come in and when they leave, and it's, a lot of that is due to the hard work of our correctional facility and the people there. Great leadership. We are one of a handful of jails in the state, has state-level accreditation through WASPIC, and that is a big task. Most jails don't even approach those qualifications or even attempt the certification because the standards are so high. We were one of the first in the state, and we continue to be one of a handful. We are also one of the few organizations, one of three, that has dual certification, both on law enforcement and accreditation site. And that is a great testament to the leadership here by Commander McHusson. She has been a phenomenal cornerstone to the success of our corrections. Her leadership, her culture permeates the staff there, and it's pretty incredible. She does incredible work, and she doesn't want to be recognized that way, but I couldn't miss this opportunity. So on behalf of the department and the correction staff, thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay. Our final proclamation this evening is for Affordable Housing Week. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas 12.6% of rental households in Kent are cost burden, spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and may have difficulty affording other necessities such as food, transportation, and medical care. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and community as a whole. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate-income households. And whereas the CDC recognizes safe and healthy, affordable housing within communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health. And whereas the city of Kent endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that our community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people in Kent live with dignity in safety, health, and affordable homes. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13 to be Affordable Housing Week in the city of Kent, and urge our residents to join the city in ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live in dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Joining us this evening is Cliff Cawthon from Habitat for Humanity.
So, usually I'm up here for other reasons, so I had to take notes. Oh, well, thank you, Mayor Ralph. Really appreciate it. Thank you, City Council. And also, thank you, Kent city staff. Really appreciate this brilliant proclamation, and also happy past May Day, it's International Workers' Day yesterday, so happy May Day, and also happy AI, ah, sorry, AAPI History Month, and congratulations to Melissa as well as the childcare providers and the other public workers being honored here tonight. I feel like there'd be a part of me that would not be doing my due diligence if I didn't say congratulations and keep on doing the great work that y'all do, because I'm the son of a federal employee myself, so have a lot of love for public employees. That being said, it's wild to actually accept this because I'm here actually wearing two hats. I'm both the advocacy and policy manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle, King County and Tass Counties. Try saying that three times fast. And I am also a homeowner here in Kent, as some of you know. So I'm just thrilled that our city has issued this proclamation, and as we speak, we still have a lot of work to do. And much of it, we may agree or disagree how to implement that, but we all agree on one thing, that one of the biggest questions, the biggest human rights questions of the 21st century is who will get to have a home, right? And Habitat for Humanity in particular, here in Seattle, in King County, with our affiliate in Kiyatask County, has been around for 37 years. We've been partnering with community in order to build affordable homeownership opportunities for people across the region, and also many of the people who are homeowners are people like many folks here tonight, childcare providers, nurses, grocery store workers, everyday people that kept us going during the pandemic. And as cheesy as it sounds, that we may also find the answer to that question in Habitat's mission statement, which I feel like all of us would agree to, that everyone deserves a safe and affordable and decent place to live. Everyone deserves a safe, affordable, and decent place to live. And in fact, we're also accepting this as a member of the Housing Development Consortium and a proud member of the Black Home Initiative. And in fact, we have, I've had the privilege of seeing dozens of people being welcomed into their new homes in the past several weeks, and I am really happy that here in Sub-King County that faces particular challenges with displacement, that we have two projects that we are currently working on in both our neighboring city's Red, Red Tamburian, and we also have in. and we also have an active repairs program that services not just people here in Kent, but all across South King County. So, I am happy to continue that work. I'm honored that, to be receiving this proclamation. I am humbled, and my heart is absolutely filled with hope and just gratitude that the City of Kent is willing to go with this journey, with us on this journey towards making sure everyone has a safe and decent place to live. Thank you very much.
All right, Council President Boyce, community events. There's a lot going on.
Lot going on, but nothing like the Thunderbirds.
Go Birds, they started this game three of this series at 7 o'clock, so we're halfway through that first period, and
Yes.
Excited.
We're very excited, yeah. They are doing really well, so we got to keep cheering them on. You got lots of seats available, so you got a chance to be sure they try to make it to the game and cheer them on. As for what's going on at Central Showware Center, on May 5th, we got Garrett Allen coming in town. June 3rd is the Kent International Festival, so that's gonna be down at Showware, and big event. I know it slowed down a little bit when we had COVID, but they back up to full speed, so that should be a very exciting event for us to go to. June 9th through June 11th, we had a Jurassic World Live Tour, so that'll be a really fun event to take your kids to. I'm sure they'll enjoy that. July 8th, we have the Wolf Throwdown with Tim McGraw. Tickets go on sale Friday, and that's on May 5th also at 10 o'clock. October 14th, we have Pedal Tour, and November 25th, we got Pepe Aguilar. So, feel free to go to www centralshowwarecenter.com and check out the events that's going on there. And that's all I have at it there.
All right, so Thunderbirds are winning. They're halfway through this series. They are on their way to being the league champions. We've got just a few more games to go. Two games, I think, with Kamloops, Kamloops will close out this series, and then we'll be playing Winnipeg probably, so stay tuned for dates.
And don't forget the Kraken, too.
Oh, and the Kraken, yeah. Thunderbirds all the way.
Yes, yes, yes. Hall hockey fans.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We celebrated Melissa tonight from the Law Department, and so well-deserved. I've worked with Melissa since she started. But we have another thing we want to celebrate in the Law Department, real quick. It is our City Attorney's 23rd Anniversary tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken.
I think 20 is the 24th.
24th, I'm sorry. Okay, 24th anniversary, even better, right? That's just that much bigger. And just so you know, Tammy started here as a paralegal in our department.
She was four.
Yes, when she was four years old. And she worked her way, she decided to go to finish her college degree and go to law school, and she worked her way through law school, became an attorney with our office, quickly moved into the deputy city attorney job, and obviously about a year and a half ago took the city attorney job, and she's just crushing it. She's absolutely killing it. She, Tammy is known for producing an immense amount of accurate work on time. I mean, it's incredible. She does the work of two or three attorneys. I think everybody will attest that when you work with Tammy, you're gonna have to keep up with her, because she gets a lot done. And she's really taken the Law Department, it pains me to say this, she's taken the Law Department to the next level.
Can you say that again, please?
And she has become somebody's favorite attorney, for sure. And the Law Department has a tradition, and City of Kent has a tradition of being a leader in both criminal prosecution and civil, and I think that's just, Annie's been upped even more. This department that she works with absolutely does immense, an immense amount of amazing work for this city, keeping the city on track and out of trouble, and making sure we do things in accordance with the law, and also things like what we're gonna talk about tonight. I can't tell you the amount of work that that office has put into that. So, congratulations, Tammy. We're very lucky to have you, and just stay.
She have anything you want to say, Madam Mayor?
No, thanks. You're gonna hear plenty from me later.
And before we move on to some additional community events, I want to weigh in on that front. So, and we will be talking about this later under our new business this evening, but the amount of work that Tammy and her entire team have put into this legislative session, I don't know how to quantify that. I can tell you that Tammy and I have been on the phone after 10:00 p.m. more nights this week and last week and the week before that I can care to count. Saturday night, it was, what, 11:30? Sunday night, it was 9:00, watching what the legislature was doing, weighing in, making decisions on how do we represent the City of Kent. And it starts with a text, "Hey, where are you?" and immediately into the most amazing work that we, as a council, we as a community, should be extremely proud for the level of work that Tammy and her entire team, and I see a lot of our Law Department back here, have put into this legislative session. So, Tammy, thank you.
Thank you. Stellar team.
Super, super grateful. All right, Councilmember Fincher, do you have some events?
I do have events, Madam Mayor. We have on June 17th, the Linda Sweezer Memorial Juneteenth Celebration and Festival up at the Kent YMCA. So, that's again, June 17th. At the same location, on May 20th, we have, as you heard, the Bike Rodeo, which is going to be from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And when you think of bike rodeo, if you haven't been to one, you may not know what's involved. So, imagine riding skills testing, basically, but also they're offering bike tune-ups. They have, aside from the skill course, they will be able to ride the bike, some of the police officers. There's a limited number of bike helmets, so it's just fun. Just take your kids out, it's just fun. And then we also have Team Up to Cleanup happening this Saturday, and there's still time to register. And you can either pick up trash, you can paint out graffiti. Signups are at kentwa.gov/talkingtrash. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one event coming up this Saturday. It's a Kent Parks Conservation Event, and it is at 9:00 at North Meridian Park. So, we will be most likely pulling blackberries, maybe planting some native plants. So, if you want to sign up, just go online.
Sure, a lot of things going on this weekend. I know my calendar is like triple-booked, so hope to see you out at those wonderful events. It is opening on May 20th, so we'll talk about that at the next council meeting. All right, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is our Economic and Community Development Report. And joining us is Bill Ellis, our Chief Economic Development Officer. Did I get that right, Bill?
You did. Hi, Mayor. Hi, council members. Nice to see you again. I know it's been a little bit. But I'm gonna just bring back where I left off, and I think the last time I went to council was in October of 2022, and I promised no crystal ball, but I had said something to the effect of, "That's a worrying sign. The number of shipments coming from overseas is declining. What does that mean?" So, looking forward, in fact, job postings have now declined 41% in April of 2023 in our Seattle metropolitan area. Big Box Freight Index, you can see is the line in the bottom there, is this year so far is well below freight the last two years. And the story, of course, the last several years has been, and this is very relevant for a city, again, with a third of our land area in warehousing, is the amount of our warehousing has, sorry, back up for a second, a lot of our logistics companies that were using our warehousing were stockpiling well and above. The experience of the pandemic was, we ran out of things. Looking forward, we need to stock up on more things. Buy more warehouse, lease more warehouse, fill it up. That was done, but inflation continued to creep up. Now, we're in a truck and rail recession. We're actually seeing, when just six or seven months ago, there wasn't enough truck drivers. They're being reassigned all across the country to different locations. On the West Coast, now we've seen precipitous drops in need for truck volume, because the freight is going down. The higher inventory stockage has had its impact, and if we're looking at consumer spending in our area, on the left, you can see all consumer spending well ahead of where it was, obviously, in the trough of 2020. But now, after that upward arc, it's starting to come back down to earth, going the wrong direction. Total spending's still up 5% from going back to 2020, but retail sales are down almost 5%, and restaurants and hotels are down 10% this last month. So, the combination of inflation, rising interest rates, has started to have an impact in a way that we're noticing in job postings. It hasn't appeared yet in employment overall, but we're starting to see the signs that this will have an impact through the recession that's just around the corner. It's hitting different segments of the economy differently, though. There's a lot of uncertainty in office. We've seen a lot of hybridization of work. We're seeing, we didn't see a wholesale moving away from office space during the pandemic. People were renewing their leases. There was still healthy activity. There was a lot of extend and pretend. There's a lot of pretending that after this is all over, we'll go back to the way it was, the demand will return. That hasn't occurred. In fact, what we're seeing instead is a dramatic drop-off in commercial real estate and office space. And there's also a longstanding trend of way into older malls and the difference in shopping patterns. You've seen a lot of headlines recently of bank balance, health, but the increasing interest rates. People are looking at commercial real estate as the next sort of shoe to drop, the next area where they expect bad things to happen, because no one really knows how bad it is. This is having an effect on our industrial market that I think is worth noting, because we don't have a lot of office, we don't have a lot of shopping malls. Our exposure as a community is not as much to office and retail. But we're still caught up in these larger trends. So, in the industrial world, we're still seeing Kent outperform the region as a whole in absorbing all of the new buildings that have been constructed. We're seeing new tenants going into all those spaces. We see strong demand. We're still seeing rent growth, but what you should expect to see now is a slowdown in construction. If you already have a loan as an industrial developer to take you through the entitlement process to construct, you're not going to get one right now. So, new projects are gonna start to slow down. So, there's still a lot of projects already in the pipeline to a certain extent, but the contagion, the fear of what's happening in commercial real estate and commercial banking as a whole, is now a factor for our industrial market as well. So, if you look at the Kent Valley industrial statistics right now, Kent itself still has a vacancy rate below 5%, which is the normal replacement rate, still very healthy. We're actually expecting that rents will go higher still, because as less construction starts to happen, because there's less investment from the banks, supply will go down, and we're not going to see wholesale vacancy in their industrial, in our industrial product, because they've used the last nine years of very strong demand to protect themselves. Landlords have put in place five, 10-year lease lengths, so they're not going to be whipsawed by a sudden softening of demand. So, leasing activity the last few years has made, has really protected the Kent Valley area. And looking forward, and I think we're fortunate again as a community, since we have so much of our tax base, so much of our employment in aerospace and in defense, we're seeing commercial aerospace come back. We're seeing defense spending ramp up internationally, so there's a lot of demand for the types of companies that we have in the Valley. So, these are sort of bulwarks against economic impact in our part of the world, but it's not going to, of course, completely bubble us, but I think you can see that the industrial market will stay strong. And I'll just use this moment again to, I've been calling attention to, and thanking council for the actions that you've took during the industrial zoning overhaul that we did. I had sort of alluded to in the past that City of Seattle was looking at what we did, and asked us a lot of questions about what we wish we had also done in addition to what we did. How would we like to have gone further? And things that were conventionally against the wisdom at the time are now being put forward by Mayor Harrell and City of Seattle as the new way to do industrial lands. And so, we're seeing urban industrial, maker and creative industrial zones. This council chose to put in our downtown area, counterintuitively, manufacturing is a use. We curbed self-storage, mini-self-storage. You're seeing that now in Seattle, that all the self-storage units that popped up in employment lands are going to be banned. There's a new openness to housing, which we have now housing in our industrial area over on 212th. And although, as a zoning matter, was not something that was necessarily, we took God at that time during the Rally the Valley experiment. And you also see now Seattle encouraging high employment near their new light-link stations. They're thinking about TOD in a different way. They're thinking about TOD as housing and more jobs in those light-link areas. So, you're seeing a lot of things that we've been talking about as a community reflecting to our north. And I think that's, again, a testament to the fact that we've been on the cutting edge of this, partly because we have to be. We have more industrial product than Soto, Everett, Eastside Cities combined. So, Kent Valley today is, still has a lot under construction. So, to look at this on the far right, where the darkest band, and just above that is that light-green band, that's Tacoma Fife. So, you're seeing a lot more construction consistently over the last few years in Tacoma Fife. The reasons I hear for this are twofold. One, that the housing is more affordable for the lower-wage warehouse job, warehouse picker work that they're looking to have. So, that a lot of the largest types of tenant for warehousing are looking further and further south. And there's also, we're about running out of land. I think the projects that we're starting even now in Kent to see are renovations, tear downs, and so forth. So, eventually, the region will run out of land, and then, as we saw in Seattle, build up. So, last thing to say about this slide is that Kent still has a lot of construction. You can see our sort of darker band there is much larger than the North End and Thurston County and Lewis County and the East Side combined, and Seattle closer, but we're still, we're now officially below Tacoma Fife. And so, that's part of our future. Also interesting, though, we're outperforming when it comes to tenants leasing our space. So, in the bar in the far right there, you see that little thin dark band to the positive, that's Kent Valley. So, Kent Valley's actually been absorbing more. Rest of the region for industrials not absorbing as fast as we have. And we can credit that to aerospace tenants. There's been some very confidential tenants who've leased some very large buildings in Kent recently. They won't disclose who those businesses are. I suspect they might be in the aerospace industry or manufacturing industry, and there's been a lot of activity there. So, again, proof of the bulwark of the fact that we've leaned into aerospace, that we're leaning into manufacturing, is kind of a way for us to outperform the region as a whole when it comes to industrial lands. So, Kent Valley leasing volumes, though, are starting to slow down, and, yeah, I think I've covered this slide. So, just other things to talk about on the horizon that I think in the years to come that we'll talk about more in our community that are of interest. I had referenced the changes in the commercial office sector, and I know that we've been wondering what might happen with the Kaiser Permanente property in Kent. I am wondering along with you, and I suspect strongly that Kaiser Permanente is also wondering. There's been a lot of changes in telehealth. There's been a lot of changes in how medical office delivery works, and I think they've, since they purchased that during the pandemic, they've had to rethink what their services are. So, I have no special insight at this point, but I think it's something that is an uncertainty to look forward to. Other thing of interest, future of electric freight. So, we're starting to see more and more of the industrial developers thinking about how to put more electricity at their warehouse for the electric trucks that are going to come. We are going to electrify freight in this country. Question is when and how. And as to the how, we know that we have a nice company locally, Pacar, that's been going slowly and steadily into the electric area. There's a lot of other companies that are moving even more aggressively into electric. An interesting thing to note is that the electric power requirements are today, the technology, of course, may change, tremendous. We're talking about power generation levels of like a semiconductor chip plant. So, imagine you, a truck is like a swimming pool, Olympic-sized swimming pool. If you were to try to plug it into the wall at your local gas station, that's like taking a very small garden hose and just waiting there for like a week per truck. So, to amp up that wattage is gonna take a whole lot of power, and something we should probably be talking more about with our Puget Sound Energy colleagues. To do that at scale, and this is one of the real question marks right now, is will this happen at the warehouse, or will this happen kind of in a Back to the Future way at some giant truck stop somewhere in the valley, where everyone charges all at once? We've had a lot of trucking, truck parking issues for 10 years now, right? And that hasn't gotten any easier. And I think the argument for why there would be a centralized trucking electrification station is to put it at each individual warehouse is going to eat up a lot of real estate that could be used for turning the trucks around, moving them. They already don't have that real estate, so having them charge for a length of period is going to. So, I'm gonna forecast for everyone today that that'll be an upcoming topic, is citing electric charging stations, not just for cars, but for trucks in our valley. Things of closer to home, closer of interest to people in their neighborhoods. The Kroger and Albertson merger, still not resolved. It's been working its way through the courts. Thing to note for us, though, is I know there's a lot of dismay about it, but I think no matter what happens with that situation, there's a lot of press that this is gonna create an opening for Amazon and independent grocery. So, I think Kent will benefit to the notion that we would like to have more grocers, one way or another. I think there are independents that are still interested in exploring new locations. in exploring new locations for grocery stores. And if there is a merger and a lot of Safeways and Albertsons are sort of sold off not to cannibalize one another's businesses, it actually creates an opportunity for groups like Amazon or others to scoop up those properties and retenant them as, as grocers. So that's a thing to watch for this community because I know that's been a longstanding conversation point. And then finally, sort of return to business travel. Council President, I know we have an upcoming lodging tax meeting, something to think about for marketing. There's, I think now the writing's pretty clear on the wall that the, the business travel trip generation of the yesteryear is just that, now a yesteryear. It's not coming back to the way it was. We're seeing a lot more reliance on video talk. And so those more cost-conscious business trips are just not coming back and not recovering. People are choosing instead, when possible, to go online and save the, cost the cut, cut the cost as a company. We're assuming, though, kind of to a countervailance of that, sort of the blezier or the portmanteau of leisure and business. So the idea that when you do splurge on a business trip, you're splurging at that point. It's how are you combining with other leisure things and amenities in the area? So the, the companies that are less cost-conscious that can afford those travel trips are going to be looking for more things to surround it. So things to think about is our community has been very heavily invested in business travel trip for our hotels for a very long time and been the main reason why a lot of our hotels have existed where they do. Just, I have a few other updates that I think probably best served at a committee level, but I just want to remind everyone, this, our office is working on a contract for small business help with Business Impact Northwest. I'll be coming back through, hopefully on the 10th, the ECD Committee. We're working on a request for qualifications right now for a consultant to work with the Kent School District in a new partnership for Career and Technical Education Plan together. And I have long forecasts and I will hopefully be back by May 16th to operations to talk about a contract with National Development Council for Commercial Affordability, something I've spoken about a couple of different times to this council. And lastly, just the last bullet there, I think it might be worthwhile, something for ECD to continue to talk, and I want to raise it at full council. Environmental justice is raised very high now at a federal agency level. And our community is host to two very large landfills owned by the City of Seattle. And if there is a community that is burdened by environmental justice legacy issues, it is ours. And this is a federal funding priority and something to be thinking about going forward. What are the new opportunities there? With that, questions?
All right. Council President Boyce?
Hey, thanks Bill, good presentation. A couple, two questions. Is there anything new on the, the grocery store up on East Hill?
So there, Harbor Freight's in for tenant improvement permits right now, but the idea is to split it into three different tenants spaces and the other two are open, open-ended.
Okay. And you know, you were talking about before is the building and stuff going up, things began to slow down. So I mean, you listen to the Fed and Wall Street, inflation probably still sits nine months out, right? So are you seeing this getting any worse? Was it stabilized or what are your thoughts on that?
You know, I, I, I can play that game. I don't know who won the Knicks game earlier. It would be similar type of projection of who's going to win the series. I'm not really sure. The talk is, of course, though, that inflation is starting to tamp down. Other countries are starting to rethink not raising the hike, raising the, the Fed is starting to rethink raising rates as fast. Because what they have noticed is that commercial lending has slowed down significantly and they watched the job posting numbers go down. You could infer from that that the policy signal to the Fed would be to not raise interest rates at this point.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Bill? Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, on the, in the agenda reports, this is an opportunity for everyone up here at the dais to report out on the work that they're doing outside of council and committee meetings here. Each of our council members serves on a regional committee or two or three and provides Kent's voice at those conversations, at those tables, making sure that we're not missing out on opportunity and that our perspective is being heard across the region. I am very, very grateful for the level of commitment that our council shows to those things. I will start by a couple of reports for regional committees that I serve on. The Executive Board of the Puget Sound Regional Council met last week. We finalized the project tracking strategy. So federal government provides funding for transportation. Puget Sound Regional Council then runs that process. One of the requirements is that that money is obligated in a timely manner. And if it is not, we don't spend all of that allocation in the set time period, we are at risk of losing future funding. So last year, we did not meet those spending targets. So it is paramount that as a region, we do spend that money. It's, you don't get more money unless you spend the money you've got. So we have built into the system some strategies that as projects don't come to fruition, for whatever happens, and we had some projects in cities that had staffing issues. So they weren't able to move them forward as quickly as they needed to. Put some things in place so that if at the last minute a jurisdiction is unable to spend that money, it can be reallocated to other projects on the list. So the Executive Board formalized that, that policy at our last meeting. Serve on Regional Policy Council. I'm an alternate on that committee. And the work being done there is bringing forward the renewal of the Veterans, Seniors and Human Services Levy through King County. It's up for renewal, it'll be on the ballot in August. Conversation was, does it come forward as 10 cents, which is the same, same amount that the levy exists in today? Or is that level increased? RPC voted it out at 10 cents. The county council wanted it to come back at 12 or 15 cents. So RPC had two more meetings last week. It was a tie at that meeting, so it went back to the county council again. And it looks like from the email I got this afternoon, the county council will be bringing it to the voters at that 10 cents. So it is the same level, but it is a significant amount of additional money because property values have gone up. So that same 10 cents per thousand generates additional revenue. That will be on ballots in August. I'm excited to say that voters did approve the crisis care levies on last, last week. So we will continue to stay engaged in that as far as a South County location for those crisis-receiving centers and what that looks like, partnering with South County cities to make sure, again, that our voice is being heard as the, as that process moves forward. Finally, really, really fun meeting today. I got a chance to meet with leadership from STEM Path Innovation Network. It is a local organization providing access to STEM learning for small kids, kindergarten, all the way up through high school. They've got a cohort of eighth, of girls that started in this program in eighth grade and be graduating this year. And they're, it's providing them with opportunity in all of the things that you think of when you think of STEM, coding, robotics, that kind of thing, but also other types of career paths in, in those fields, HR and marketing and those kind of things. They were founded in Seattle. They're now housed in Renton. We are, they're working with one of our elementary schools, Springbrook Elementary, doing summer programming there, really expanding their programming. It's a pretty exciting organization that we at the City of Kent support. And our great team in economic and community development is doing all kinds of great things to connect them with other organizations in our city to make sure that our kids have the opportunity to access that STEM education. So really proud of the work that we're doing and it was fun to get to meet them in person today. With that, I am going to turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick here, happy to announce that our new HR director started on yesterday. And the mayor and I have had a chance to meet with her a couple of times and really impressed so far with what we're hearing. She's, she's doing a great job meeting with her cohorts in the city and, and getting to know the department. And we're really looking forward to that. And with that, I'd really like to thank Natalie Wineka, the Deputy Director. She stepped in in the interim and she did an incredible job with both helping with the recruitment, continuing her main job, which is recruiting, which I'll talk about in a second. And then just helping us onboard the new director. She, she did an incredible job during that period. And I think it's her second time doing that. So she, hopefully that will be her last. So finally, I think, and this is kudos to Natalie as well, I think we onboarded six additional people.
Eight.
A lot of people this month. So recruiting has picked up. They've kind of changed their approach a bit. They're doing an excellent job. We're getting good candidates. And her crew is really, really doing a fantastic job. So she deserves a lot of thanks for that. So that ends my report. Everything else is in the minutes. Thanks, all right, sorry, in the CAO report. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Pat. Council President Boyce, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For our workshop, we had two great presentations. One was on the King County Regional Homeless Authority. And then we had one WASH dot update on State Route 167 master plan. As far as the, the King County Regional Homeless Authority, we got a lot of agencies out there really trying to tackle this problem here. So they are just one of many and they seem to be doing a pretty good job. I really like their little overall goal in the state, bring unsheltered people inside as quickly as possible to prevent death and further harm. Such a powerful statement, right? As I said earlier, lots of agency out there is really trying to tackle this homeless problem. I would, a couple of things up to date that have been, I made progress on. One was more than 5,600 individual couples and family have moved into a permanent housing in 2022. I mean, that's a huge accomplishment. And they got over 1,000 people engaged throughout 2022. Their emergency housing vouchers is about 100% utilization. They also, they relaunched a re-procurement using our equity procurement manual. They're focusing on housing resolution and also improving coordination and effectiveness of severe weather response. So during the cold weather time, they're trying to make sure they're improving, people have a place to go. On the WASH dot update for 167, I kind of, I didn't think about it, but when you, you made it clear, right? If you don't have a plan, then you can't get nothing going. And that really kind of resonated with me. So the team is really doing a good job on the 167 and 405. Really, they got a 50-mile plan they are looking at to improve in the role. The 167 to State Route 410 northbound, that was a finish up, opened up last year. We also got like 200 and was it $2.88 million from the state, right, to be able to do this work. So the team is making great progress and hopefully be able to get the plan done and then take it forward to Olympia. In addition to that, I am the Chair of the Sound City Association, Sound City Association Pick Committee. And we will meet one week from tomorrow. And that is all I have. And I'm going to start tomorrow. Left, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few things. Last week, I spoke at the Seattle South Side Chamber of Commerce Pacific Northwest Education and Workforce Summit, and that was held at Showware. And that was a really cool event. There were a bunch of high school students there. And then outside and downstairs in the Showware, there were a bunch of employers. So students could go, there were like some carpenters there and they could go like hammer some stuff. There were welders out there, fire engines. The police department was there, Cairo Radio, just a lot of employers. And it was really interactive and pretty cool. So I was glad to be a part of that. It looked like a lot of fun. And then on Earth Day, I volunteered at Clark Lake Park. We had about 40 volunteers out there doing some conservation work. So it was great. And then, okay, my big news, I promoted it last time. All right, I was appointed as the Associated, Association of Washington Cities Representative for the Washington Community Forestry Council. And I'm super excited about it. We had our first, well, I had my first meeting there and everyone was really great and fun. And I just feel like I fit in there, so it's exciting for me. So we are going through a strategic plan for the state urban and community forestry program. And that will be for the years 2023 through 2029. So we talked about our goals. And then the big news right now is that the federal government has $1 billion, yes, B, billion, available to any city organization, nonprofit, available for forestry programs. So, but the bad thing is that your grant application has to be in by June 1st. So I have talked to Julie and our forestry team about it. They're working on it. But also, we encourage the state to put in for more funding because they had already had a grant application written. And that way, they could just use it for pass-through. So I just encourage us to get, apply for it. It's $1 billion. It's like a one-time thing that will happen, so. Yeah, and that's about it. That concludes my report.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And once again, congratulations, Andrew. That's another way of having Kent been represented, right? So, good job. Councilwoman McCora, how you doing?
Thank you, Council President. I do not have any updates on any committees, but I do have a brand new week. So I decided to spend some time here, that's why I'm here, fortunately.
Congratulations again. Okay, Councilmember Malama?
Thank you, Council President. So I had the honor of filling in for Councilmember Michelle at the April 20th Human Services Committee. And we had a great presentation on Community Engagement Plan and specifically focusing on a potential tool for future community engagement. It is the Engage Tool that is already being used by several departments throughout the city. It is a comprehensive planning tool. We got, we deep dived into the actual interface and it was really impressive. And I think there was general consensus amongst the committee that this would be great for gathering diverse feedback, you know, feedback from diverse groups of stakeholders in a different, you know, different way than perhaps we traditionally go after. We, in addition to that, we took care of a funding recommendation. We moved $15,000 in allocated funding to, to programs that will immediately, will help address the immediate need for additional rent assistance funding that we see in the market today. And then that was it for that. I also serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will be meeting this Friday. So I'll have that report next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Malama. Councilmember McTrowner?
Thank you, Council President. I am Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We will meet next Monday. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. We met on April 19th where we had a briefing on the Service Recovery Plan. Metro currently is operating about 90% of their pre-pandemic service hours for about 50% of the pre-pandemic ridership.[1607.46] percent of the pre-pandemic ridership. Um, as you recall in Kent, we had strong ridership during the pandemic, but we did eliminate some routes. So there is concern, um, as we bring some of those things back, what does that look like for Kent? So I will keep you posted. We also had a briefing on Metro's Zero Mission Fleet Plan, um, and as you heard in the discussion earlier, outfitting those vehicles and then getting them charged is going to be very expensive and something that Metro doesn't have the funding for yet. I am also on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board with Council President Boyce and Councilmember Thomas, and at our meeting on April 19th, we had a proclamation for Nurses Week. So it was really great to recognize the nurses and the mental health professionals that participate in our CARES program and also in our co-responder program that we're doing here. So it was a nice opportunity to recognize them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, for the Arts Committee, we have the new exhibit up over in Centennial, and during, we had the reception, the artist's reception where artists were actually present, and a piece was actually, uh, purchased while we were there. Councilmember Laramo was also there that evening.
Six pieces were purchased that night.
Ah, six pieces. So that's a word to artists, submit your work to the city of Kent. And the per, the pieces are purchased not only by the city of Kent, but by residents, you, me, anyone. Uh, for Public Works, the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan for, uh, the six-year TIP, was presented, as well as the Flight Control District Plan for the Lower Green River and Planet Protector Summit. So if you're wondering about what street improvements are coming up, or what the deal is going on with the Lower Green River and all the work that you see going on out there, check out those reports. And one thing that I forgot to mention was the fishing derby is in, the Parks Department does a fishing derby, and they are in need of volunteers. That event is on the 20th. If you're someone who likes to fish and you don't spend, mind spending a couple of hours, or even have shorter periods helping teach kids over at the old fishing hole, letting them have the experience of catching a fish, hopefully. That river is stocked, it's a fun morning. Check out the Parks Department website. Thank you. Oh, and the other, I'm sorry, the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee and King Conservation District have not met yet.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And one last, also want to thank Councilmember Michelle for stepping in for me when I was out two evenings ago, so thank you for doing that. Madam Mayor, ends our report.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Moving on in the agenda, item number six is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not.
All right. That brings us down to the consent calendar. We have items A through C this evening, and Consent Calendar is a compilation of, uh, things that the council has worked on at committee meetings, uh, presentations, opportunity to have conversation, and they have passed out of committee without controversy. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can make a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar, item A through C.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us down to other business. We have one item this afternoon, or this evening, and it's drug and alcohol possession ordinance. Um, Council, if you will humor me a little bit, I'm gonna set this up, and then we'll turn it over to Tammy, um, to talk about the details of the ordinance. So, uh, as many of you are aware, uh, what's called the Blake Decision occurred in the state of Washington where the Supreme Court, um, said that our drug, drug possession laws in this state were not constitutional because of missing the word knowing there. Um, the legislature had the opportunity to just add that word in, and they chose to not do that last session, um, instead completely changing drug possession, um, laws in the state of Washington. What they came with, came back with last session was a one-year fix, called the Blake Fix, and that is the model where, uh, police officers had to contact someone two times that, um, were in possession of drugs, offer them treatment. On the third time, they would then be arrested for what was a misdemeanor crime. Uh, lots of problems built into that, like no tracking system, um, and the idea was really to connect people to treatment, which I think everyone can get behind. Uh, that law was put into effect and sunsetted, sunsets July 1st of this year, and legislature was, was going to undertake the, a permanent fix for Blake. Uh, we immediately saw problems with that here in the city of Kent, and Council, you all passed what, um, I believe is the first public use law, um, in the state of Washington. Many, uh, cities have followed suit, and we've been hearing about that in the news, um, all the time, as we've been sort of going through this process. The legislature did a lot of work on Blake this session, and there were several bills that came that were proposed in the Senate, everything from making drug possession a felony again, all the way down to full legalization of controlled substances in the state. There was a, a fairly middle-ground bill. Senator June Robinson, um, proposed that that came out of the Senate. Um, Tammy, our team in law provided a lot of feedback on that, our police department. Um, and I, and I think it's fair to say that that, that, um, proposal was the closest thing to what we felt like we could live with and that would be effective at getting people into treatment, um, but also maintaining drug laws in this, in, in our city, in the state. Um, you know, we're seeing fentanyl deaths rising at an alarming rate, and so, uh, the personal opinion, full legalization does not help that problem, right? It just encourages that problem. So we spent a lot of time working with our legislator, legislators and the delegation, both before session, during session. That bill that came out of the Senate, like I said, I think that most cities around the state were very, were able to support that. Uh, it made its way to the House, and the House, um, made some pretty significant changes to the bill that was then sent back. Um, the biggest thing was they tied possession and use together, uh, meaning officers had to watch someone use the drug to charge them with possession. Those two things were tied together. Uh, general and specific rule, learned a lot from Tammy over the last, um, the last few weeks as to how this works, and we had significant concerns. We shared those with the delegation, um, variety of other things. Um, the, the Senate really wanted to see it as a gross misdemeanor. The House wants to see it as just a misdemeanor. The difference between a ninety-day jail sentence potentially and three hundred and sixty-four days, um, what the off-ramps look like, when someone could choose treatment, what meaningful participation in treatment look like, was something that there was a lot of debate around. Um, and, and then the length of jurisdiction that the court had, whether it was a year or two years, depending on, on which bill you were looking at, and some of the things, um, that were problems there. If we wait too long, all of that evidence is stale-dated if somebody decides that they're not participating, but also not enough time to get through a court process. So we consistently weighed in on that. Um, Tammy did it in a much more eloquent way than I'm describing it, but, um, provided all of that information. On Sat, last Saturday night, uh, the vote came up before the House on, on the proposal that the Senate had then sent back, and it failed by, I think, thirteen votes. And this was about eleven-thirty on Sunday night, Saturday night, that the, that we had that vote. Um, they were not able to come to any sort of resolution, and on Sunday, when, um, the legislative session ended, there was no fix for the Blake Fix. Um, the, the practical outcome of that is that drugs, all drugs are legalized in the state of Washington starting July 1st. Last Monday, I came back, I, I made an announcement that we'd be bringing forward an ordinance to you all to step in and fill that gap. Um, we did see that this evening, Governor Inslee has called a special session of the legislature. Uh, the, the frustration with that is that I'm not hearing anything from our legislators that they've come to some sort of agreement. So we don't know what this special session will hold. Um, and also very concerned that the, the very watered-down version that was the last thing that was presented, um, if they couldn't come to agreement on that, that whatever comes behind that could be even more watered down. Uh, so we've been very, working diligently to bring forward a solution for the city of Kent that is first and foremost, a treatment-forward ordinance, meaning we want to get people into treatment. That is the goal. The goal is not to put a bunch of people in jail and leave them there. We want to see people get into treatment. If they don't choose treatment, then they're, then they're choosing the legal path. Um, we are not setting people up for a, a life of being convicted criminals. They have an opportunity to have those charges, um, either not filed or vacated, um, through our, through our process. So, uh, Tammy will be presenting the details of the ordinance tonight for your consideration, and, um, I just want to say that I'm grateful for, for your willingness to listen to this ordinance, and I, uh, whether it ends up sticking or the legislature, um, comes back with something, what I do see, and we, we're already hearing this, um, is that Kent's ordinance, the proposed ordinance before you, is a roadmap for the rest of the state. We, um, Tammy, you got a compliment from Municipal Research, MSRC, MRSC, MRSC. Uh, they're, they're the place that, that cities go for, like, how should we do this? And they came back with, um, uh, an amazing compliment to the ordinance that has been written, and the thoroughness and effectiveness of it. So, um, I have a hundred percent confidence in what we're proposing, and again, my hope is that, um, as we go into special session, that the legislature takes a look at what we're proposing here in Kent and uses it as a model for moving forward, um, in the state. With that, I am gonna turn it over to Tammy for the presentation.
Thank you. So first, everybody was so nice, um, and now I have to pass out a couple of corrections to the ordinance, so I did make some mistakes that I'm now correcting. So, um, it's double-sided document. The corrected version is in the packet online. Oh, you already have this, sorry. Um, corrected version is in the packet online, so everybody watching from home is able to see the current version of the ordinance, but there was one schedule of, um, controlled substance drugs that I overlooked, so I've added that on page six of the ordinance. I've highlighted that for your benefit. And then also on page nine, there was just one clarification, and I'll get into this, um, specific provision when I get through the ordinance, but removing in minor in possession of alcohol and putting it into this chapter, and there was one clarification I wanted to make to make sure that it was clear that there are some statutory defenses that are in our state law that will carry over into this ordinance, and so I just made that explicitly more clear by referencing that RCW provision. Uh, so as the mayor said, um, she saved a lot of time for me because she went through all of the history of what happened with Blake and with our legislature, but one of the real challenges that we had with the legislation that we were asked to look and comment at is it was relying on these programs that don't exist right now, or the state doesn't have the capacity to fulfill the services at the degree that we're gonna need. Uh, the proposal that the mayor's put before you tonight, our court is administering this program now. They are able to step in and apply this from day one. It's not a system that needs to get up to speed, and so we'll be able to accommodate these individuals in this program. Uh, so what the mayor's proposal does is it strikes what we think is an appropriate balance between treatment, accountability, and then also providing some funding for treatment for those who are indigent. And so with those three pieces together, we think we're gonna be in a position to be more successful than what we've seen from the state so far. So the ordinance before you first will repeal our existing chapter of nine point twelve of Kent City Code. It's, uh, entitled Narcotics and Barbiturates. It's an old chapter originally. I want to say it was adopted in the eighties or in the nineties. We tweaked it a little bit when we were dealing with the public use of drugs. We're now suggesting we just repeal that whole thing and start all over. So what you have is a repeal of the existing text, but adopting a new chapter. Uh, we add in new crimes, and these new crimes are the ones that would not be really enforceable under the state's version come July 1, and so it makes it a gross misdemeanor to knowingly possess controlled substances, controlled substances or leaded drugs, and it makes it a gross misdemeanor, so that penalty is three hundred and sixty-four days, days in jail, or a five thousand dollar fine, or some combination of both, as our court imposes. It makes it a misdemeanor to knowingly possess drug paraphernalia. We did have that provision adopted locally years ago. When Blake came out and we went through and updated our code, we did remove that provision. This is now putting that back in. It keeps the existing crimes that you adopted back in September. So on September 6th of 2022 is when you adopted the public, the prohibition against public use of drugs. That is gonna remain. You also adopted the ordinance that provides it's a misdemeanor to, uh, intentionally or knowingly drop or deposit, uh, drugs or drug paraphernalia on the ground. It keeps that provision existing. Uh, it also now moves over the minor in possession of alcohol into this chapter, and the reason for doing that is simply to make sure that these individuals have access to the same program that we're gonna go and lay out for you tonight. So that is the whole purpose. We don't change the law in any way. We just move it from where it exists now in a different chapter and put it over here so they can take advantage of these same opportunities. So that's kind of the first accountability piece. It really sort of lays out what the crimes are and what the potential penalties are that a person faces if they violate. Now we move into really the treatment phase of it. And so as the mayor talked about, uh, there's off-ramps, you know, and we've provided through this ordinance, three different off-ramps. The goal every single time is to get an individual connected with treatment. Um, I don't know a prosecutor, whether it's just in our office or even with another city, that doesn't want an offender who has a substance uh, use issue to get treatment. That is our number one goal all the time, because we know if we can get to those core issues, it is hopefully going to stop that individual from reoffending again. So throughout this process, we're trying to get that individual connected with treatment. So the first one is we create here locally an alternative deferred prosecution program. So there is currently a provision under state law. That state law is a five-year program. What we are proposing for this ordinance is to take it down to a two-year program for these particular drug possession-type crimes. So we are prohibited by state law and case law interpreting it with respect to like DUIs or Title 46 violations, um, domestic violence violations, then also, uh, criminal maltreatment. So if you have a dependent and you abuse that dependent, there's some limitations there. And under those programs, you can only have a deferred prosecution one time. Under this local program, and now under state law for any other crime, you can have as many deferred prosecutions as the court is willing to grant to you. And the benefit of that program is you go into treatment for a two-year, for us, at least a two-year program. At the end of that, you're able to get that charge dismissed, so you will not have that conviction on your record. That is the benefit of the deferred prosecution, and that is one of the things that we've tried to recommend to the state. We already have this process that's in play. It works. Every municipal court has dealt with it. Let's fine-tune that to fit for these type of crimes, instead of just retooling everything and starting over from scratch. So what we're suggesting we do here is deal with that locally, um, so that it gives an individual that first shot to have that charge dismissed. It also gives, under our local program here, a little bit more discretion to our courts. So under the state deferred prosecution program, um, there are some provisions where if an individual gets a similar offense and they're convicted of that similar offense, the court is required, they shall revoke that deferred prosecution and then move into the judgment phase of that, a phase of that individual and their sentence. We are saying instead, the court has the discretion to do what they wish with this crime. So if an individual falls off the wagon and they use, the court is not required to revoke their deferred prosecution. They can continue to do what they think they need to do to get that individual to connect with treatment. But again, if they are non-compliant and they refuse to comply with their treatment, the court can revoke the deferred prosecution and then move over into another penalty phase. So this is kind of where we get into sort of the second off-ramp. So worst-case scenario, a person starts out with the deferred prosecution, and they're not able to follow the treatment program. And so the treatment program is pretty intense. We've kept in most of what's under the state program, again, because it's worked, and our court is familiar with it. So it has intensive inpatient or outpatient treatment. It requires support group meetings that they have to attend to. Um, there's an evaluation and a treatment program that gets established for them, and they're required to comply with that. The court can also impose other conditions that they think are appropriate to ensure that individual is successful, including maintaining law-abiding behavior, abstaining from drugs and alcohol, all of those provisions. If they fail to comply with that and the court reaches their wits' end and they decide, nope, this isn't a program for you, they can revoke it. Now typically, we would instead argue for what's called a suspended sentence, which means this conviction goes on their record. We here, through this ordinance, provides that the city will not object to the court entering a deferred sentence. And what that means is it defers the court actually imposing a, a criminal conviction or their sentencing, excuse me, the sentencing on that, until they comply with certain conditions. So that yet again is another way in which that charge can be dismissed after they go through treatment and they comply with court. So not only one are we gonna try through the deferred prosecution program and give them an option. If that fails, we're still now going to say we're not gonna object to deferred sentence, which will still allow you to get the benefit of a dismissal, but you still have to go through treatment. So again, if now if they decide they don't want to go through that option for treatment, and we move into the deferred sentence gets revoked, and so now it's an actual conviction that shows on their record, yet again, we're saying still, if you go through court-approved treatment, now that conviction is going to be vacated. And so with that vacation, it removes that conviction from their record, and assuming they comply with treatment, then when that happens, the individual can truthfully say they have not been convicted of that crime. So there's like three different opportunities for an individual to avoid getting a conviction on their record. And what's really important about the vacation of the conviction is that oftentimes if there's job applications or housing applications, you have to indicate if you've been convicted of a crime. Through this process, an individual will be able to say, no, I haven't been, because they followed through with what they're required to do. They followed through with their treatment, and they've received the benefit of that vacation. So we try every opportunity that we can to get this individual connected with treatment, and if they stumble and they fall and they're unsuccessful, there's yet another opportunity where they can go through treatment and then get the benefit of having that charge go away and be removed from their record. So another option too is with all of those, oftentimes there's the hurdles about how do we pay to get the assessment that we need for a deferred prosecution, or how do we pay for the treatment? Well, our court already is using funding that they have available for indigent defendants to get connected with treatment. So we do that now through community court, and also I confirmed with the court that if an individual wants to take the benefit of an existing deferred prosecution under a five-year state plan, um, that they will make funds available for that too. So they've been using funds through the AOC grant now. They have another hundred thousand dollars that's available through ARPA funding for this same purpose that they'd be able to put toward here. And one, another part of the mayor's, um, proposal to you to consider is amending the budget to now use that opioid money that we've been getting in through the settlements, to make it again available to the court, to be able to use for these indigent defendants, to get them connected with services. So for us, we feel like this is a good holistic approach that deals with the appropriate accountability, does not lose focus or sight of how important it is to get folks connected with treatment, and then also helping to give them the resources and the financial support to go in and get the treatment that they need. So with that, it shows a lot of questions. There's a lot of information that I've given you, um, but I'm happy to answer whatever I can. And I have Sarah here as our expert and other prosecutors if, uh, I need to call a friend.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tammy, my first question is about, um, oftentimes when people are arrested for drug crimes, it's, or possession of drugs, it's because they have done something, another crime. Is that crime also eligible for vacation?
So if it's not one of those other, those that I've named, so if it's not a DUI or a Title 46 violation, and that is because the state has expressly said you can only get one and it has to be by this 1005 process, so if it's not a Title 46 violation, it's not a DV offense, and it's not, um, uh, maltreatment, then those could all fall under here with the agreement of both parties. So it'd be the prosecutor and the defense attorney would both have to agree that that nature and that charge is appropriate to go, fall under this two-year alternative deferred prosecution. And there's some where we may not agree. So if it's a crime of violence, um, that might be one that we don't think is appropriate to fall under this two-year alternative plan, and we might request instead that they go under the five-year state plan. So this really is focused on those that are heavily driven by that substance abuse. But once we start getting into violence-related issues, we might shift what our recommendation would be. But this does leave that door open. But it makes it clear for all of the drug possession charges that they're all eligible under this program.
Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm going to be supporting this, and, um, I'm gonna go through some of the, some of my reasons why. I talked to a number of people. I talked to, and first of all, I'd like to thank our, thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank our staff, because I had a ton of questions on this ordinance, proposed ordinance, and, uh, they were right there and readily answered them willingly. I also talked to former addicts. I talked to judges. I talked to people in and outside of this city, outside of the region, and even outside of the state. Um, and again, thank you, guys. I've, I've gone over and observed the DUI court and the community courts, and I was impressed that one guy actually, who was there that day, actually comes back, even though his case is done, because of the relationship that he's built with the judge. So he's back his case is done, because of the relationship that he's built with the judge. So he's back at the court regularly and has conversations with the judge. To me, unbelievable. Some of the things I heard was, well, we don't treat people with heart disease or diabetes or asthma. We don't throw them in jail. I do agree that it's a health problem, but direct impacts are felt by our residents, by our businesses, impacts insurance rates, and I don't see it as caring for the people themselves. In my visits to the, to the drug court, or to the DUI, not drug, to the DUI court, I witnessed families who were reunited there. I witnessed people who had basically a second lease on life. I was happy to find out when I was reading through that there are numerous onramps to eventual success. So with the individualized programs that would be used by our judges, again, we already have two models up and running here, it gives people a chance to be able to successfully turn things around. Some people can stop cold turkey all on their own. Most people cannot do that. I work at an organization where we see people coming to the door, whether it be for a number of different things, coming to our office because we provide some, we provide help. Most of those people are not able to turn it around on their own. There's a difference in helping and enabling. I see this as a step to helping. Otherwise, if we do nothing, I believe that we just enable people to continue on down a path that is not going to help them. I also believe that they are not the only ones at fault. We have people upstream, the people who are selling to these people, the people who are selling to those people. And I believe our police department does have efforts looking for those folks also. I wondered about the type and the cost of treatment, because just as with housing, one type of treatment does not fit everyone. I found out that with their therapist, that's how the treat, or with their counselor, that's how that's decided in coordination with the judges. Cost was a concern to me. I found out the courts actually have a person to help. Not only do we have those funds coming in from the state, from the, hopefully, if we go ahead and pass this, the money from the, the lawsuit and other sources, hopefully, we will be able to have a person who they're, part of their job is helping connect people with services. One of those services, being able to get insurance to help pay for this. So these are individualized plans, not one, one shoe fits all. We have a lot more, our, the judges here have more flexibility, as you heard, than the state judges, to use their discretion. And I was concerned about the person who falls off their, off the wagon and needs another chance, or they fall off a few times. The judge, seeing their progress, has the chance to offer that. I then worried about, okay, well, can they game the system? I said, they could be saying all the right words that I want to hear, but their actions don't show that? No, there's not going to be gaming of the system. So I was, after reading through the ordinance, checking with sources who have lived that experience, and not everyone was the same. But I am supporting this because I see this again as that on-ramp to potential success. Thank you, guys, for working this up. Thank you to our legal staff for working this up.
Councilmember Fincher, did you have a question?
I do not.
All right. So any more questions before we call for a motion and then open for discussion? Councilmember Larmour, question or discussion?
Mine was discussion.
Okay, so we'll, Councilmember McShoe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so Tammy, can you walk me through what happens when someone gets arrested? Let's say they're breaking into someone's house. The police find them in this person's house, and then when they search them, they find them in possession of drugs.
Let's go something simpler. If maybe they're not breaking into somebody's house, since that's a felony level, let's just go.
Oh, okay, whatever. Another crime, another misdemeanor.
Yeah. So if then an officer makes contact with the individual, and say even they were using drugs in public, let's just keep it specific to the ordinance. If an officer sees an individual using drugs in public and they have possession of their drugs, they can, and they observe it happening, they can arrest them and book them into jail. Now, whether they stay in jail is going to be a whole host of possible circumstances. Do they have a warrant for another charge? Why the jail may not want to release them until they see a judge? Is there something where the jail is able to just release them with a promise to come back to court the next day to appear before a judge? Or has the court established sort of a bail schedule for that particular charge where the person can post a few dollars and get out? Can be a whole host of issues. But the main goal is to get them back before a judge to make connection with the charge. If they're arrested and they're in custody, our prosecutors get the case to review the next day so they can be brought before a court and before a judge and have bail imposed in their case. If they're released and they don't come back, then the court would issue a bench warrant, and then it has to wait for additional law enforcement contact to bring them back into custody. But once they get before the court, they're going to have access to an attorney. And so the attorney is going to be familiar with these local provisions and the options that are available. And then they can talk with the prosecutors in our office to see what they can do to get this individual connected with services more quickly and get them out of custody if they're still being held on bail.
Okay, so then who keeps track, making sure that they're progressing through this program?
So if they're on a deferred prosecution program, it's typically monitored by the probation department with, which is an extension of the court. And so those individuals meet with these folks on a monthly basis, who also then gets report from their treatment providers once they're connected with services. But as Councilmember Fincher was indicating, the court has this resource coordinator. And so right now, that individual works a three-quarter basis. It's a part-time position. Starting next week, they're going full-time. And their job is to get individuals connected with resources and treatment. And so they would work with this type of individual to get them into a treatment program. And once that, once that happens, and that treatment provider is going to communicate with the probation officer that's supervising that individual, there's an issue of noncompliance, then it gets back before the court, where we have a prosecutor and a defense attorney that appears before the judge to discuss that issue.
Okay. And do our service providers have enough capacity for this?
And I have not heard that they don't. And so part of what the resource coordinator is doing with the court is not only establishing and maintaining like the existing connections we have, but also going out into the community to see what they can do to bring in additional resources. So I talked with Judge Franz today, and he said that was something that's really important to him is to make sure not only do we keep what we have now, but we're bringing in additional resources that we can access.
Okay, one last question. So what happens if the state does pass some sort of law? What happens to our law?
So then it's going to take going through what the state passed and comparing it with what our ordinance is and seeing which parts can remain. This is a portion that unless they were to completely preempt us under the existing state deferred prosecution program, that I think we'd be able to maintain. So unless they do something, so one of the bills that was floating through, and again, there were so many different variations, but there was one bill that made this navigator program that the state had established as the only and the primary diversion process. So if they did something like that, that could limit our ability. But right now, not only do we have this deferred prosecution program, if that's not the right fit, our prosecutors can work with defense attorneys to tailor a certain different agreement that they can come up with. Sometimes they put them out, it's called like a stipulated order of continuance, but they essentially continue the case out with certain check-ins to allow an individual to complete certain tasks. And assuming that that is going okay, then the individual will get the benefit of a dismissal at the end of that too. So there's a lot of options that we have available. This is just one that we're trying to formalize and put into process that's existing and established, and we think successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tammy? All right, I'm not seeing any. Council President Boyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4461, repealing and reacting to chapter 9.12 of the Kent City Code to prohibit unlawful possession of drugs, to prohibit the use of drugs in public places, and to create a new alternative two-year deferred prosecution program for individuals charged with such crime, which will connect them with treatment and allow their charges to be dismissed or their conviction vacated upon successful completion of treatment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We will now open for discussion. Council President, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll definitely be supporting this here motion. I just, I read this ordinance, and what a phenomenal job. I think it's definitely, it is a good role model. Hopefully the people will let me take a look at it. I also hope that, you know, we as council member, you know, we have people that represent us in our district, and you know, people outside your district, right? So they are going back May 16, is what I heard. So I encourage us to really reach out to them. To me, this is common sense, right? You know, it just, well-written, and I think it is a win-win situation, right? Not trying to lock people up, trying to make sure to get treatment and, and be productive members of society. So I would encourage us all to be sure to reach out to our legislator for the 47 and the one that we know outside of 47. So I will be supporting this here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council President, Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council, Madam Mayor and Council President. I too will be supporting this tonight. And Tammy, yeah, just echoing what everybody said, excellent job. Reading through it is so thorough and well-crafted and easy to comprehend. So I appreciate that. I will be supporting this because of the details within it, the three opportunities to avoid conviction, having those, you know, those on-ramps and off-ramps and the, just the accountability that's built in to this program, I think is what's been missing. And it's that, the fact that you're responsible and you're answering to a probation officer for that monitoring. I think, you know, in the, and it seems much more fair and humane to me that we are offering, we're offering treatment at a point where hopefully it's, it's, it's ahead of and preventing any of those type of felony activities that can't be expunged and can't be vacated and deferred. So, you know, for all those reasons, and, and just the simple public safety and environmental impacts that this, unlike asthma or heart disease, you know, that, you know, public, the opioid epidemic and the drug use just has a different impact on the public. So I think this is a great step in the direction of taking action to protect our community, our environments, and the people themselves. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. I will be supporting this ordinance as well. As it's been mentioned by my colleagues, it's important for us electeds to keep in mind our constituents that we represent and to listen to their concerns. And I think Tammy, you've done a great job with this. And I think, Mayor, this addressed the questions and concerns that we've had. And I think if a community raises ordinance, they will definitely be able to get their answers. And I think we have to support our community members who are struggling with this illness. And this is a way to support them, I think. And so I thank you for bringing this up. And I'll be working out on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will also be supporting this. I know everyone keeps thanking you, Tammy, but you and your staff did an amazing job to put this together in a very short amount of time. But also thank you to those people who work in our court system who have been doing an amazing job to get help for the people that want the help. But also thank you in advance for continuing to keep what you're doing going, because I think that that is where we'll see the biggest success. This isn't something that's probably going to happen overnight. And I think it's important to thank our, ask our community to be patient as this program gets implemented and we work through some of the kinks. But hopefully we'll see some good success. So, thank you.
Tammy, clarifying, when this ordinance goes into effect?
Yes. So if it were to pass council tonight, it will go into effect on July 1. The existing code provisions that we have now, so the public use prohibition against public use of drugs, that will stay in effect unaffected. But this would all go into effect on July 1, assuming the state doesn't do something in between. If they do, then I'll be back and we'll figure out what we're going to do next.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carries 6-0. Counsel, I cannot tell you how proud I am of you for taking this action. I was extremely proud back in, in September when we were leaders on the public use. You are now setting yourselves up to be leaders on this issue. This ordinance, I can't say it enough times, my hope is that the legislature takes a good hard look at this. It meets all of the things that we are hearing from community, both those that are suffering from substance abuse and those that are suffering because of the crimes committed by those suffering from substance abuse disorder. It addresses those things for our community. It says it's not okay to allow people to remain addicted, and it's not okay to allow them to commit crimes because of that addiction. It satisfies all of those things. And I think it does it in a compassionate way, but one that has actual consequence. And I think that that's been one of the struggles, right? If there's not, if there's not a consequence, does, does it make a difference? And so I want to say thank you very, very much to this council for passing this. I think you could be the first ones in the state taking this action after legislative session. So very, very proud of the actions.
I'm sorry, not that you have the last word, but it's your leadership too. I want to thank you for your leadership. We talked about this earlier, you recognize right away. So I don't want this go by without thanking you for your leadership, Madam Mayor.
Amazing team. Pat, we've been working on this together all the way through. So very, very grateful for that, that teamwork. And that's, that's what we do. So more to come on the opioid settlement use. As we work through this, we've got some of that money in it. This feels like a very appropriate place to spend that. But we need to work through some of those details. And, and it will be coming back to council as we get through, as we get through that. So thank you again very, very much. All right. We do not have any bids this evening. We do not have an executive session. So before we adjourn, couple of things want to say, if you didn't see the announcement, Tim McGraw coming to Showwhere Center on July 8. That's a pretty big show. It's pretty exciting. And go Birds. Like, they're going to make it all the way to the end, and we're really excited about that. So with that, thank you all, and we are adjourned.